Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
McMullin?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any here.
Alright, so we'll go on to the proclamation for the US Fair Housing Law. Based on me having a cough that won't go away, I'm not gonna read all of this out loud. But this is an annual proclamation that we make regarding the US Fair Housing Law. At this point, I will open up to public comment. If anyone has comments for council, please step forward to the podium and state your name. And you have three minutes. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Item one, motion to waive competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of a Cypress Shelter Kit from Timber Frame Solutions LLC. Get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion. Dave Connor with the second. End discussion.
Is there a reason why we're going with Cypress?
It's more water resistant. It actually grows in wetlands. It's recommended. Morello Park, from time to time floods.
Yeah.
And so the thought was, let's try Cypress.
What's the reason behind skipping the bidding process?
Cooper by name, kid.
Kid, that's just part of the bid?
Well, then, there are multiple kids and they have different features and that.
That's fine, that doesn't exactly...
Well, then, if we're gonna go that route, then it's probably not a kid, we're just bidding for a structure.
That's a good one. I just think, you know, I see the picture now with the wood on the bottom, and I don't know why it has to be Cypress, you know, if you put, can't you use like concrete legs and boltwood to it? Can you use that instead?
Well, we did use concrete, there's a lot of extra effort required. And the pad that was poured, the concrete pillars were not poured, so we would have to incur that cost.
Will this be going on the pad that's already out there?
Right.
I think Cypress makes sense because it lasts so much longer than other woods. It's more expensive, but it does last a lot longer. And it's treated, I take it.
Yeah, and it's resistant and it's, I think, suitable for a wet, you know, wet area. And the creek does flood.
Is there an estimate on how much labor will be to install it?
Well, anywhere from thirteen thousand to thirty thousand. One of the issues is the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act. I, we received just a little over thirteen, may not have been compliant with the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act. So I'll need to do a little bit more research. So we're not ready to go on that. And I, I just wanna get the kit ordered, so we can get it, get that underway.
Would we be hiring to have this constructed? Or would we be using, how it works in house?
This company has approved that it does build these shelters. And that's the thirteen thousand figure. Ed has been calling around and trying to get other prices.
I'm not in favor of waiving the bids, just in the interest of transparency. I'd really have to put out the bids and go that route.
Well, then, we're gonna have to develop, you know, detailed specifications and that.
Would you mind that, or maybe pricing on a couple kits? To review?
Whatever, but I'm just, I never wanna waive bids when we can bid it out just because transparency, it makes, you know, it's just more honest to me. And I, I really don't understand why we're going with Cypress when those shelters out there have been out there for fifty years and they're probably starting to fall apart. It's just, I can see ways to spend fifteen thousand dollars on wood than this.
We're down, what, two?
We're down, yes.
They took one, one came down the spring. The one that was leaning.
I don't, I don't see a transparency problem because it's the price that it is, it's the advertised price.
Right, but there may be somebody else out there that has a cheaper price.
If you, and if you shop around...
Yeah, and there's quite a bit of labor involved. If you just buy the stick lumber and have to cut everything to the pieces and to have it hopefully erected. And this is what Ed has determined to be the low-cost option. But it is what it is. It's a kit made in a factory and they, you know, they piece it together. I'm proposing it tonight because I think it's a low-cost option based on my conversations with Ed. And he's done a line share of work on this. And he has talked to other companies, I don't wanna give too much detail, but it has got informal quotes. And this is the direction he was suggesting.
I think if we just did the bidding process and anyone who's contacted us, you can let them know that it's out for bid and these are the specifications that we're looking for. I mean, I would assume this company would bid the exact same price, so if this is divestment out...
I don't know if other companies can bid on this company's product.
Well, that's part of the dynamic here is if I expect, if I expect it to such a degree, I, I'm limited to just one. I would have to open it up a little bit. And if you're opposed to using Cypress, then that will change things, obviously. But then, we're gonna have, yeah, we'll have to decide what the price is gonna be.
Because you would have specifications for everything, so they could all bid on similar product.
Right. We'll have to develop specifications and...
We, we can, so yes, we can develop a size. And there are multiple vendors who are talking to Ed and we went through this process. This is, I will say, this is the process that we went through when we did the Ralph Plumber, or the Plum Pavilion. We, the council at that time ordered a kit and then we did go out to bid erected. But we can put together specifications of a size that'll fit that thing and let the different, there's lich field, there's this skidder for timber frame, there's multiple vendors that can bid it, you're right.
There's probably five quotes like that if we went to this.
Yes, so, yeah, we can put it out and I can develop the specifications with Ed and the park board, because the park board's seen this too. And we can work with them and put it out.
I guess what more what I've learned or wanted to know is, if we did skip the bidding process on this, what criteria are we gonna use in the future to tell someone we're not gonna skip the bidding process again? That's, that's where my concern is. Are we opening up the door for anything we do like, oh, we can just skip the bidding process 'cause we did it for that shelter at Morello? This is more important than a shelter at Morello, so we should definitely skip this time. I, I just feel like if status quo is to do the bid process, then we need to follow status quo rather than create any potential future.
That's fine, now, city councils do waive, if you choose not to, that's perfectly fine with me.
I suggest we just table this until, because obviously, we're not gonna get a majority either way, so... Yeah, you need to have all, everyone in agreement if you wanted to proceed anyways.
Yeah.
So if there's any...
Yeah, I, what I, I'm, I would see two things, one, do we for sure wanna go for it with Cypress? And two, there's probably other quotes that you're just not seeing. And this might be the lowest one. So maybe it's just presenting more information to you, to...
But the other quotes are not a formal bid process.
No. And do we need a formal bid process? Or is it, here's our five quotes that we've received?
Well, if you don't go through the formal bid process, you're restricted to the four, you know, the vote requirement by statute. So if there's any opposition, I suspect that's just the process we need to go through then.
But if we're going to ask Jeremy to put together, you know, some kind of criteria, we're gonna have to decide, do we want metal roof? Do we want shingled roof? Do we want a wooden roof? There's a lot of different things we would have to put in, so they're all making a bid on the same product.
Right, it'll be very similar to what you have for you tonight. It's just that I don't wanna limit it to just one bid.
Or could we have several companies submit different kits? And we can select one of the kits?
With waiving the bids in it?
Yeah.
The bidding process requires that we set the specifications. We've kinda handled this informally. The first shelter that we had at the high school, we didn't bid that. We just had...
It was more of a community project, no?
But what I'm, it's just a process that we went through just in terms of back and forth, and this is what we decided on.
There's a shelter on, it's in City Park.
On the east side.
On the east side.
Along the...
That was a kit. I don't know if we went through the same, did we bid that? Or did we just get quotes on different kits? Do you remember?
We just got quotes, but, so there is, the option that might work is, you could request proposals. They don't all have to then be apples to apples and the council can weigh them, but then you're ultimately gonna come back to, we like this kit the best, we've looked at five or six kits, and then you'd have to still vote by four, but you've looked at multiples. We'll put it out, it's a request for proposals, which would be publicly advertised. Tell us about your kit that meets this size, and then you guys can make a decision about which kit you like.
I think that's better than coming up with our own specifications and going through that whole process. Well, just, just ask people to submit kits and...
Let me, let, let me circle the waggon. If we can go out and do a formal bid process, 'cause that is what is being requested and still accomplish it, then that's what we'll do. 'Cause otherwise, we're gonna have that same issue of transparency. There would be one kit that'll offer this and another kit'll offer that, and you're gonna have to make a judgment as to what's more important. It may be a kit that would be slightly more expensive than the other kit, but it may have a feature that you would otherwise prefer. In a typical bidding system, it's just the low price is the low price. We've determined what's important as part of our specifications.
So how do we proceed from here? Do we table this, or do we just vote it down and then...
Well, both would have the same effect. It's not likely that...
If you table it, it sits on the table forever.
Well, you could bring it back at some future meeting if you chose to do that. That would be an advantage of tabling as opposed to voting it down.
Yeah, our rules say bring it back at the next meeting. I guess procedurally, my preference would be to just vote it down.
Vote it, vote it down and start over.
Yeah, and give direction to the city engineer as to what he wants, because apparently Cypress is not something that he wanted in specifications.
Oh, I didn't say that exactly, I just wanna know why we went to Cypress. You know, if Cypress is more expensive, does the whole thing have to be Cypress or just opposed that are going to the ground? Can we, you know, can other parts be cheaper? And what's, what's the, what's the future plan for Morello Park? Is it to build all Cypress shelters out there? Reprisal of Cypress shelters, 'cause what, another four or five shelters? That's another two hundred thousand dollars down the road?
Well, we'll need to bid it both ways in order to establish the charge for Cypress.
We have two, is it two shelters that are on the, for the grant that we...
Yes, there are two shelters included in the Ozlight Grant down by the, by the, by the pond. But those will be included in a general bid. So they'll be part of a bid package.
I wasn't sure if we should try to keep the same requirements, I know they're farther apart. So visually, I prefer it to look closer to the one the high school just built, but...
There should be some sort of consistency in that.
But is, yeah, is there...
Like, this is the one we got in two thousand?
No, I know, but, yeah, so we wanted, I wanted to try to look the same instead of...
Now's the time to decide that the two, and they don't have to be this, but in our application, it was the two that matched what we did at City Park. And that was the style at the time that they...
On the east side.
Yeah, on the east side, and which kind of mirrored Plum Pavilion and that was the way they were gonna go. But then, the high school's now involved with the, with the new one, so...
So with that, yes, we'll call for a vote and proceed with...
And we'll start over, based on your direction.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
We have to have a motion and a second.
We have to...
Oh, yeah, we already did.
So long ago, I forgot.
Connor?
No.
McMullin?
Dave.
Reed?
Dave.
Mayor Beatty?
Dave. Okay, we'll move to item two. An ordinance to carry surplus revenue in the Streeter South Industrial Special Tax Allocation Fund and authorizing payment of that surplus revenue to Livingston County Treasurer for distribution to affected taxing districts on a pro-rata basis for tax year 2022 payable 2023. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion and Matt with the second. And any discussion? This is what we did last council meeting, except for Livingston County. It's a little sad. Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye. Item three. Resolution concerning Freedom of Information Act Request for the City of Streeter, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. Can you get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dave Reed, second by Dave Connor. And discussion?
So this is a nature of a housekeeping matter. We're adopting the schedule that is set forth in the Freedom of Information Act, but we're adopting it specifically for us, even though it's all followed. And also, the Freedom of Information Act allows the municipality to require a protester to put a Freedom of Information Act request in writing, and this resolution imposes that requirement.
With the, in writing, I believe there's, is there something about it? It'll be allowed anonymously?
A Freedom of Information Act request can be anonymous. It could be written on a napkin. It could be in crayon. But it must be in writing. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
What other way?
Have we?
What other way have we gotten?
Other municipalities, well, an email is a writing. Other municipalities, people will stand up during public comment.
Okay.
Or they might even meet a council member at, you know, run into you at the gas station and say, "Oh, by the way, I want this document." And that technically could be construed as a Freedom of Information Act request.
Okay.
Or telephone calls, exactly.
And we've gotten them?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm very much in favor of making sure they're in writing, so...
Alright, any other discussion on this one? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye. We'll go to the consent agenda. Get a mo, request a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of four hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Matt and Dave Connor with the seconds. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye. Okay, we'll go into discussion items. Item one was just city properties for sale. I think we discussed this maybe last year. So I wanted to just get a list of what properties we have and we can advertise them, what we need to do to try to move forward on any of them before the grass starts growing and we have to mow them all. So...
Have these all up for sale now? Or can't be up for sale, or there's something to do with that?
There's...
Is it such a way to have an auction? Can we set a price?
Well, we're supposed to advertise them for sale and I believe, I looked at the agenda last Friday and I meant to look at this list again a little closely. I think almost all these are going to be taken through, like a demo process or maybe a quickly lead. I'd have to double check because I think we've got a bit more leeway on our ability to sell those without them being appraised.
How did we determine the value? 'Cause there's a wide range here. Is this how much we have wrapped up in that property already with the demolition or acquisition? 'Cause it's low is four fifty and as high as a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
I'm not sure what that is.
Those are all by appraisal. Certified appraisals.
Oh, we do have appraisals on all those.
If, if there's a price listed, it's by certified appraisal.
Okay. The appraisal could be stale, but it's...
Yeah, but they were all done by an appraiser.
One of the issues I think is that will come up is on the residential lots. From time to time, I'll get someone calling to purchase one of these cheap residential lots and their intent is to park an RV or a boat on, on the lot as opposed to paying for outdoor storage someplace else. Or just erect a garage without a principal structure. In both cases, that's not permitted under our code. And so I pretty much discourage and don't process those requests because it doesn't make any sense to create a zoning or other kind of conflict with this individual. So, you know, we're not really getting requests for the lots for new home, new home constructions. That would be, go ahead. We probably would give the property away if someone wants to build a house. But that's why we tend to be holding these lots.
That would be something we definitely could advertise. So with the housing crisis, like, free lot, build a house.
Build a house, get a lot.
Just to get in the way of law.
So this is just selling the property at four hundred and something dollars to avoid mowing. It's also, we're, we're doing it because there isn't really demand by the neighboring property owners. They don't want the extra help from mowing. And we're trying to avoid creating these storage yards or, or, you know, mechanic shop in the middle of the neighborhood.
Would it be illegal, or I guess in-house, if, say, if one of the neighboring properties did wanna buy this? Say, there's no permits, if you build a structure, garage, you know, what do you want? Maybe consolidate all the ones in the property?
Is do that short subdivision process to join the lots.
Yeah, so that way it makes it one. And then just say what type of way miller is it, as long as you build something on it.
Yeah, if you, if you have a principal structure and join the lots, then you can put a garage up. I've told people that. But most of the time, it's not a neighboring property owner. Someone who lives maybe across the street or somewhere in the proximity. But unless you're physically adjacent.
I would say it'd be nice if we could make it advertised for the neighboring property that purchased it, so then you know that it'll be taken care of and...
Well, it puts it back on the X axis and it's one that's certainly at the bottom.
So the ones that are listed okay to sell, we can sell, obviously. Second resolution, to, just to leave, do that, another process. And then after, after they go through bids, if there aren't any bids on the property, then we're free to sell for whatever price we want, correct? We have to put out, any of our property out for sale. If there's no bids, we are, we can either accept a bid, reject a bid, or throw it back or for sale.
There's, it does get easier to sell, but there's still some procedures that need to be followed. And I'm sorry, I don't recall those off the top of my head. I know you did them at the council
And that, the spreadsheet in front of you reflects Cheryl's little memo and that's basically the one that says needs second resolution. There's one step that, you're right, there was no bids came in. The council just has to say, let the city manager deal with it. And then he can, yeah, the city manager can then dispose of it. But yeah, that, that's what that means. I remember that spreadsheet when it was put together.
And then the ones that don't have anything on it are...
Still need the first step.
Okay.
So for our next meeting, I guess we can go through and maybe group and say, these are the ones we can sell and try to get that advertised. Just, I mean, even if it's on Facebook or something, just so we can... We, if we sell one, I'll consider it a victory.
It's numbered wrong. Eight twenty-one, East Main, that's the property that we just decided on.
Eight twenty-five.
Yeah, it's numbered wrong, 'cause it should be...
Eight, eight twenty-one is...
Should be even numbered, it's not...
That's that weird triangle line next to...
Between Johnny Dollars and the tracks. There's a, there's a piece of...
Eight twenty-one, eight twenty-three, okay.
Eight twenty-five was the one that was across, on the wrong side of the street.
Right, that should be at two.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, we have a plan for that. Items two and three are related. This was the Garden Club and Monarch Mission seeking permission to collect at the downtown corners on, there were, I think, two weekends each. And so that's, if we put it as discussion, typically it would be a consent agenda item. Either... So I'll go just move on to that if there's any discussion or questions on, on that one.
Give me an opinion, I have, is I just don't like the people are on the road. I mean, it's, I've been at the intersection, standing between me and the car next to me. It's just like, I wanna say go to the second one. This is how I feel about it. I mean, if you wanna come out, if someone encourages you to come, then I feel like that's fine. But I don't like people in the road. I think it's just asking for a disaster, especially if they get our permission to do it, then when they do get run over, it's our fault that we let them out there. My opinion.
Do we have any policy regarding this type of activity?
No, and it started, I think, Streeter Fest, Fourth of July into Streeter Fest. And then people were generous and I think the word got out. And the Cox for Kids did this last year. And now it's another...
I think the fire department's been doing it for...
They do that for...
Two weekends before...
Yeah, they do that for MDA.
Yeah, they've been doing that for years.
Yes.
They were the first.
Yeah, and I know the Lions Club, second weekend of October is their candy days. And they just started a few years ago. 'Cause they used to stand in front of Kroger's and Kmart.
People to Casey's.
Those places. Since Kmart's closed down and Walmart doesn't let people do that, the Lions Club started doing it at the intersection of Otter Creek and Main. And the reason they chose that is they thought Main and Bloomington or Main and Park were just too busy. For the same reason Matt said, they just didn't feel comfortable having people out in those intersections, so they went out to Burner, Otter Creek and Main. And they've collected quite a bit of money, but it is not as busy and, and easier to be safe out there.
Can we find out if other communities have any policy regarding something like this? 'Cause I'd like to see, if you're, if you're going to do this, if we're going to allow it, they need to have reflective, holding on, they need to have reflective, holding on. Maybe a sign at each intersection saying, you know, we're collecting today for this group so that people know who they're collecting for, so you know it's not somebody just out there trying to put money in their pocket. And limit how many times maybe a year they can do all that kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And where?
I think the concern, at least that I have in talking to other people, the concern is, is once we allow these two new groups to do it, the next month, we're gonna have three more groups.
Someone's gonna be there three times.
So it's gonna be every weekend, all spring, summer and fall. You know, so how do we, how can we be cooperative to these groups that are trying to do good things for our community? At the same time, control, you know, for the safety of both the citizens and the groups.
I think what you're gonna find, it's an appropriate legal question for the attorney to look into, but you're probably gonna run into court decisions declaring panhandling, panhandling to be a First Amendment protected activity. And once you cross that bridge, if you will, it's gonna be difficult to limit it. And the state may have policies on panhandling on state highways, which would be the case of Park and Bloomington, Main, the bridge. But I think we need to look into it and figure out what the rules are. But we can't be the only community that has this issue.
I'm sure there's others. And I think, I mean, knowing, we're Streeter, we know the groups. But it might be good to have like an FBI number or some kind of proof that it's a charitable organization as well.
Yeah, I've seen signs in some intersections that have a lot of panhandling, discouraging, the, you know, giving money to the panhandlers. And, but I don't see them going away. So that probably tells me that there's some legal limitations of what we can do.
If we set a standard to, does that add liability to the city?
I think it's similar to, you know, when we allow other facilities to be used and we have them sign a waiver and that, you know, you're doing this at your own risk.
We can request, you know, certificate of insurance to show us that they are insured. In case something happens, they have their own insurance. I know the Lions have to do that. We have to provide a copy of our insurance.
And why that Streeter does too.
Right.
Should we hold off on this until the first week of April? That's still before their time?
Yeah, I think.
To make a decision on that.
What dates are we looking at here?
Not till April 12th and 19th.
12th is the first.
Our first meeting's the third and then May.
So let's look at a policy for this one. Okay, any other, so that's the end of our discussion items. We'll go to city official comments.
I have none.
What? Oh, okay. Let me get my list quick. So I just wanted to mention, we got, I got a call Friday from Congressman Darren LaHood to let us know that in the federal budget, we will be receiving $750,000 for our Iowa Avenue project. So that's official, budget's passed and we were awarded that amount. So Jeremy will be working on that and it'll probably be probably next year construction.
Yeah, by the time we get through everything, it'll be next year.
All the paperwork and everything, but it's nice to have that come out of another place.
It'll come out of somebody else's pocket.
Yes, it's our, all in all, it's our pocket, but.
Yeah.
So that's good news. There is a State of the Cities address through Illinois Valley Area Chamber next week. I've been asked to be their guest mayor, so I'll be presenting what's going on in Streeter at that. They're typically centered around that IED corridor. And every year they ask one mayor in the area that's not one of their member orgs to come. So I'll be part of that. There was ribbon cutting today downtown at Tinker Tuckets, which is in the former Designs and Science Building. It's party supplies, magic shop, rent bounce houses, different things. So they opened up and there's a ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon at the new running store. So it's nice to get businesses opening. So that was a good, so that's a good week for that. I guess the other thing, Jeremy, do you wanna give an update on the West Hickory 121?
Oh, yeah, so I suppose this basement will be done here probably tomorrow, maybe Friday. And then that building should be coming down next week.
So good news on that.
It's about 2:10, so.
The same contractor you awarded the contract to is gonna do that one and then immediately go right back.
Okay, any other official comments? Okay, you get a motion and second to adjourn.
So move to the second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion and Matt with the second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye, being adjourned.